... Marami ko ang... ...... Malabo sa South America Philippines annual conference. At kami po ay naniniyan na... ......... Bago po ako simula ang aking conferensa. Para...
Pagkatiko ala dumanyo kamusta. Sa akin mati wala kabruhan. At malabo sa sinabi ko. Wala sa puso kong itumabing. Pagkain ko'y sayo, pagkatino po sa'ko. Kaya tawitin ko'y sayo. Si Hesus ang aking musika. Nagbibigay sigla sa mawat pa'tika. Si Hesus ang aking musika. Sa pinagsasaad ang bawat tawitin na si Kristo'y buhay sa akin. Ngayon ang musika ang hatid. Nagmula sa puso kong itumabit. Pagkain ko'y sayo, pagkatino po sa'ko. Kaya tawitin ko'y sayo. Si Hesus ang aking musika. Nagbibigay sigla sa mawat pa'tika. Si Hesus ang aking musika. Sa pinagsasaad ang bawat tawitin na si Kristo'y buhay sa akin. Si Hesus ang aking musika. Nagbibigay sigla sa mawat itikang norma. Si Hesus ang aking musika. Sa pinagsasaad ang bawat tawitin na si Kristo'y buhay sa akin.
I heard a great voice out of heaven saying, "Behold, the tabernacle of God is with men. He shall dwell within them; they shall be his people, and Almighty God will be with them." He shall wipe away all tears from their eyes; there shall be no more death, neither sorrow nor crying, and no more pain; the former things are all passed away. He shall step on death's throne and set me whole; I make all things anew. He said unto me, "Write these words, for they are faithful and true; and it is done. It is done. It is done. It is done. He is the Alpha and Omega, the beginning and the end, the Son of God, the King of Kings, Lord of lords; he's everything. Messiah Jehovah, the Prince of Peace is he, the Son of Man, seed of Abraham, second person in the Trinity. He is the Alpha and Omega, the beginning and the end, the Son of God, the King of Kings, Lord of lords; he's everything. Messiah Jehovah, the Prince of Peace is he, the Son of Man, seed of Abraham, second person in the Trinity. He is the Alpha and Omega, the Son of God, the King of Kings, Lord of lords; he's everything. second person in the Trinity. He is the Alpha and Omega, Lord of lords. He is Messiah Jehovah, the Prince of Peace is he, the Son of Man, seed of Abraham, second person in the Trinity. He is the Alpha and Omega, the Son of God, the King of Kings, the Messiah Jehovah, the Creator and seed of Abraham. He is the Alpha and Omega, the beginning and the end, the Son of God, King of Kings, the Lord of everything. He is Lord.
Salamat sa ating konferensya.
Marami salamat po sa... ......... Magandang hapon po sa ating lahat. Ah, kaputipas po maestro Gilyalon. Ah, bahagi po ako ng Regionalization Team Philippines, no? Na sinulat po tayo sa taon, November 10, no? Na meron tayong mga pag-aaral tungkol sa Regionalization, Worldwide Regionalization. Ngayong hapon, may nagpapasalamat tayo dahil binigyan tayo ng pagkakataon, ng oras, ng program committee, ng Central Conference para sa gawin na ito, no? So, na is nating tawagin si Pastor Israel Bangsill para maganamin sa atin sa ilokan. Pastor Bangsill?
Hinihilig po natin na tayo lahat eh ngayon. Amin Diyos, pansamantalang kami titigil sa aming mga ginagawa. At ah, kami nagigluhod sa inyong harapan. Upang kami mananagin at itulugan ang aming gagawin sa hapon na ito. Awantimaramidami po ako na awal kapag atamin. Sugat muna ng naprint me, talaga amin, aramidami din eh po rin malam. Pakiromanan ako diti perahalan me, makalagun din regionalization. Sigapumati manggudipinasirin di pa terumay sa da kami. Ketikan na kami italna, itusog, ipanunut ni tikaluami. Na mengadal kayo dito eh, naman manak ni sudang, pachen me, napakaspesyahan. Dipanat mission me, dipanat ministerio me, tigdayan. Betisuna natin sa amin, arawat din rin malam, betibintisuna amin amin. Dahil itikararami me, kukpin sa Kristo matuloy. Amen.
Salamat po Pastor, pwede na po tayo umupo. At para po tayo ay i-welcome sa... .........................................................
Thank you po. Magandang hapon sa ating lahat! Mataya po 'yung formal na patanggap sa inyo. Pero for the meantime, gusto po ko kayong i-welcome lahat sa pinakamasayang konferensya ng Middle Philippines Annual Conference, ang host annual conference. Sige nga po, walang pangay mo, taga-meetpokdang. Meetpokdang. At, tsaka welcome to the marvelous Episcopal area, Manila Episcopal area. Kaya pinatag po, mga kaya po, may welcome po na gagawin. Natatanggapin tayo lahat at seselebrate natin. At papasimula, 22nd Regular Session Philippine Central Conference. Sige, welcome po sa inyong lahat.
Salamat Bishop. Ah, nung 20... Ah, General Conference 2024, alam po natin na pumasa po ang Worldwide Regionalization. Seventy-eight percent ng dumadudon ay nag... ......... We approved the Worldwide Regionalization in the recent General Conference in Charlotte, North Carolina. So dahil po dito, ah... Kahit po siya pumasa, no, sa General Conference, kailangan tayong mga Pilipino pag-aralan natin ito. At sa 2025 na annual conferences, dun po tayo talagang aktwal, no, nabuboto kung tanggap na tanggap natin ang bagong estruktura ng ating iglesia na dyan po nakasalalay. Hanggang ito po ay inangkin, no, ng ah... Central Conference, Standing Committee on Central Conference. At ito ay pumasa sa nakaraang Central Conference. So ang layunin po ng ating pagtitipon ay muli, ang alam ko ang iba sa inyo nakapag-aral na tungkol sa ano'to, no? Ah, Worldwide Regionalization. Ang alam ko 'yung Northwest Philippines. Valdez, palakpakamp po natin si Pastor, no? Ahm... Dahil dyan, ang iba din mga annual conference sa PAC, ang mga districts dyan, at iba pang mga distrito natin ay nakapagdaos din ang mga pag-aaral tungkol dito. Gayun pong Central Conference, may isang petition na dinala sa Central Conference para suportahan ng ating Central Conference mismo ang na-approved na ito na petition sa General Conference, no? Pag ito po ay pumasa sa Central Conference, more or less ay papasa ito sa ating mga annual conferences. Kasi tayo po ang mga leaders na nandito ngayon para magpaliwanag tungkol dito. Pag ito ay ating niyakap, pag in-embrace natin ang estrukturang bago na ito, tayo po ang inaasahan pagkatapos ng ating mga pag-aaral. Tayo ang magtuturo, magpapaliwanag, magpapa... Pag sinabi pong magpapaliwanag, hindi po tayo magpapalabo, no? Pag sinabi tayo ang magpapaliwanag, pag bibigay tayo na clarity kung ano ito, no? Ah, matutulungan natin ang ating mga annual conference delegates, no? Sa... mula sa mga local churches mismo para yakapin ang bagong estruktura na ito ng ating kabuuang iglesia. So kaya po tayo nandito ngayon para mag-aral uli, mag-review 'yung iba, at pwede rin tayong magtanong pagkatapos. Kung meron pang malabo sa atin tungkol dito sa Worldwide Regionalization, pwede po tayong magtanong mamaya, no? Sa ating ano'to, sa ating forum na ito. So 'yan po ang ating layunin ng ah, pagtitipon natin ngayon. So, kung nandito na po ang WUP Choir, ay tinatawagan po natin silang umawit bago po magsimulang maglecture sa atin si Bishop Seri Francisco. Nandito na po ba ang choir? Han? Ay, nandito na, okay. So, palakpakamp po natin ang WUP Choir. Marami salamat sa WUP Choir. Ah, hindi ko alam na si Maestro Arnold pala ang kanilang conductor, no? Salamat po sa kanila at palakpakamp uli natin, no? Ngayong hapon po, ang ating tagapagsalita, ayaw po niyang nagpa... pinapakilala pa siya eh, no? Pero siya po 'yung ah, Bishop natin na ah, Chairperson po ng Standing Committee on Central Conferences. Kung saan po nag... ah, ito po 'yung ah, author, no? O nagreport sa General Conference at nagpasapo na... At kung saan naipasa, no, ang Worldwide Regionalization Petition. Ah, si Bishop Seri Francisco, ang dati nating Bishop sa Manila Episcopal Area. Retired na po siya, at siya po ngayon ay busy, no? Busy pa din sa pagkakarpintero, sa pananahi, no? Pagbabike, no? At ah, busy po siya sa issue ng mga mangisda at mga magsasaka sa Bulakan at sa Central Luzon, no? Hindi po tumigil ang kanyang advocacy for the rights of the people, especially ah, the vulnerable fishermen and fisherfolks and farmers in Bulakan. So i-welcome po natin si Bishop sa lecture. Baka pwede na rin nating imbitahin si Dr. Lev... Mamaya ka na, oh sige. Si Bishop na po ang dito.
Salamat ah, Pastor Russell sa... ............... Magandang hapon po sa ating lahat. Hello, good afternoon. Alright, I'm so blessed to see all of you this afternoon and I take it as a privilege to facilitate in the discussion of the Worldwide Regionalization. But before I begin my task this afternoon, let me recognize members of the past. Ako po ay past Chair ng Worldwide... ng ah, Standing Committee on Central Conference Matters. Meron na pong bagong Chair and I'd like to recognize members of the Standing Committee who are here from the lay, Dr. Henry Caluya. Dr. Caluya, please rise. Hector, I mean, Hector. Iba pala 'yung Henry, ano. Okay, thank you Doc. And also Reverend ah, Igmedyo Echila, clergy member of the standing past Standing Committee. And of course, I'm so blessed this afternoon to see and be with us the very efficient and magnificent secretary of the Standing Committee on Central Conference Matters. It's none other than Reverend D. Stickly Minor. Siya po 'yung aming secretary. Basta kami nag-usap, pagbalik niya sa amin, photo copy, photo finish ang aming mga pinag-usapan. Thank you D for coming and being with us this afternoon. I'll just do the presentation, but they will answer all the questions. It's a deal. Now, ah, mga kapatid, Worldwide Regionalization is... is a starting point for the next phase of our journey as United. for the next phase of our journey as United Methodist Churches. We are all excited because in the last postponed General Conference, it was approved, seventy-eight point something percent. The General Conference delegates approved the Worldwide Regionalization. But before I proceed, let me just, ah, let me just give an overview of the structure of the United Methodist Churches. We all know that the United Methodist Church is like our government, where in there are three branches. The Executive Department, or branch headed by the Council of Bishops. The Legislative. All the legislations pass through these branches of our governance. The General Conference, that's significant because what we're going to discuss this afternoon is approved by the General Conference and the judiciary headed by Judicial Council. Alright. Worldwide Regionalization. Oi, sorry, babalik. Let me present very briefly the history of Worldwide Regionalization, because I believe that's very important in our conversation. Because there are people, there are some members make comment that regionalization is an obsolet of the traditional plan, one church plan. But let us go back to the history. What happened? Wala ba 'yung ano? Hindi nasama, 'yung, ah... There's another slide document, but I, I'm sorry if it's not included. Yeah, yeah. Let me just go over, in eighteen eighty, in eighteen eighty, creation of central conferences in the Methodist Episcopal Church. General Conference limits its own power. In nineteen twenty-four, the Board of Mission proposed that the US become a central conference, but it was voted down. In nineteen twenty-eight, though the US was unwilling to accept structural changes, additional rights were given to central conferences to elect their own bishop, though their status was not the same as the bishops elected in the United States. Totoo po 'yun. Teka. And then, in nineteen, ah, tama ba? Alright. Oi, sorry. Hindi ko kabisado kasi ito eh. In nineteen thirty-nine, Methodist Episcopal South sought inspiration from the central conference model to create jurisdictional conferences. So, the central conference then became a model. And in the nineties, Pastor na ako niyan. In the nineteen, in nineteen nineties, Bishop Nakpill from the Philippine Central Conference challenged the Church to become more global and less US-dominated in general, in his Episcopal address. I was then a delegate in two thousand, and that was a part of his report. And then, saan na ba ako? In nineteen ninety-six, General Conference created the CPT, Connectional Process Team, which analyzed the structure of the Church, brought proposal to General Conference that no region or continent should have more than fifty percent of votes at General Conference, and US should become a central conference. And in two thousand, General Conference voted this proposal down. Tatanda niyan, delegate during the time, I nag around-the-world study, conducting education on globalization. So, when it came back to the General Conference, it was voted down. Alright. And in twenty-two thousand eight, General Conference received a common report proposing that the US become a central conference, globally rename to regional conferences. Constitutional amendments passed the General Conference, but were not ratified by the annual conferences. So, it was approved in the General Conference, but when, during the ratification, it was voted down. We were not able to get the two-thirds aggregate vote. And, ah, in twenty-twelve, General Conference received a study on the worldwide nature of the Church, the global nature of the Church. It introduced paragraph one oh one for a General Book of Discipline and paragraph one two five for a covenant for the worldwide United Methodist Church. So, the Standing Committee did, the Standing Committee worked it out, the Book of Discipline, paragraph two, one oh one, and we were able to present that last General Conference. The General Conference mandated the Standing Committee on Central Conference Matters develop a General Book of Discipline to determine what could be adaptable by central conferences. This work began following the twenty-twelve General Conference. The draft of that Book of Discipline, the General Book of Discipline, was presented during the General Conference, and it was approved, alright. Now, yan, in twenty sixteen, the Standing Committee recognized that the US needed a way to adaptable work, but felt it was outside of their mandate, building on prior work by other groups and commissions. The Connectional Table, with the assistance from West Pat, worked on a way for the US to do needed adaptable work and attend to US-specific matters like pension system. That was the time when the Connectional Table began to think how the US Church, the jurisdiction can be, ah, improved or make, say, structure that is parallel perhaps to the central conference. The Connectional Table submitted legislation to create a US Regional Conference and an interim US Regional Legislative Committee to attend specific matters related to the United States. Alright. Yan na po 'yung pasimula, na 'yung Connectional Table nag-draft ng, ah, Regional Conference for the US. And then, during the time of pandemic, meron namang mga issues sinadmit sa General Conference petition, say for example, like a Christmas covenant, ano pa isa, protocol, yan. Pero dahil sa pandemic, 'yung protocol na inip, umalis. Inuunahan na nila 'yung General Conference. And that was the time when the Christmas covenant was developed. A group of central conference lay and clergy made a draft of the Christmas covenant, and in one of their conversation in Cavite, I remember that, it was in Cavite, when I was presiding, that we studied the Christmas covenant, and the Cavite Philippines Annual Conference approved and petitioned the General Conference on Christmas covenant. Yan, that's the part of history. In twenty-twenty-three, the Standing Committee and Connectional Table collaborated to create legislation based on the work of the Christmas covenant. What we did, what we did during the time, we chose five members from the Standing Committee, five from the Connectional Table, and five from the Christmas covenant writing team, and we may, ah, we organized a task force, and we studied thoroughly, until that task force decided that this legislation be sponsored or submitted by the Standing Committee on Central Conference Matters. And in twenty-twenty-four postponed General Conference, we submitted the worldwide, it's no longer Christmas covenant, but worldwide regionalization. And surprisingly, the General Conference approved it overwhelmingly, seventy-eight point something, it's overwhelming. And because of that, we, here we are now, this coming annual conference session, mga sessions of the annual conferences, you will be asked to vote on the ratification of the Constitution. Now, it's very important for us to understand what we are going to do. Teka. Yan. The question is, what is Worldwide Regionalization? I tried to translate these materials into Filipino. In my understanding, Worldwide Regionalization, ay pagbabago sa struktura, pamamahala, at pagmimisyon ng iglesia ayon sa kultura at sitwasyon ng bawat rehion. A change of structure, I will discuss that later on. Pangalawa, Worldwide Regionalization ay pagamayenda sa saligang batas ng ating iglesia. So that we will be asked during the annual conference session, if we agree on the amendments, we will vote yes for that. Pangkatlo, ang Worldwide Regionalization ay pagpalit ng salitang Regional Conference sa Central Conference at Jurisdictional Conference. Lahat ng provision in the discipline in regard to that matter, to that name, shall be replaced by the word Regional Conference. Ito ay pagsisikap ng iglesia ay maging akma sa ating panahon at tumutugon sa ibat-ibang kontekstokultura at sitwasyon ng ating panahon. The Church, the Church is trying to become relevant and responsive to the needs, to the culture, and the situation of its region. Alam niyo po, napaka, napakahalaga na 'yung ating iglesia ay tumatapat o nakakatugon sa panahon. Ako lagi kung sinisir ito, na 'yung Church natin dapat relevant. Pagka tayo ay naging irrelevant, hindi tayo nagse-serf pa sa Church. Alam niyo po, merong, ah, okay lang siguro kung sabihin ko sa inyo to, ano 'yung, si Bishop Nakpill, sumulat po siya 'yung kanyang sixth volume on spirituality that secularizes about the world. Sabi niya, dun sa klak niya na 'yun, sometimes we look at the world as sinful, corrupt, and perishing. Because the world is corrupt, we tend to divorce ourselves, and we don't want to engage in the world. Because ayaw nating mahawa sa mundo, ayaw nating maging makamundo. But the question is, how do we look at the world? How do we respond to the needs of the world as a Church? Ang response daw ng iba, eh dahil ayaw niyang masabi mahawa sa mundo, eh lumalayo, nabubuhay bilang ermitanyo, namumundok, at nakakulong na lamang, at ayaw niyang makialam sa mundo. But the question is, how did Jesus, how did God look at the world? And if you look at John 3:16 for God's soul of the world, and the mission of the Church is the world. Kaya 'yung prayer ng Panginoon ay hindi tayo inaalis dito, nandito tayo para maglingkod at mag-misyon sa mundo. And the Church should be relevant and responsive to that. Responsive and relevant to the need of our time. Kaya 'yung mga issue ngayon ay tingnan natin, pagkaralan natin, paano tayong makaka-adapt 'yan. Ito, pagamayenda sa saligang batas, ay, teka, bumalik. Ito ay naglalayon, napapanatili ang pagkakaisa ng iglesia metodisa sa buong mundo, at mapigilan ang pagkakahati-hati o paghihiwalay. The Church should continue to become one. And we think, and we believe that this, the change of structure can help to keep us one. Among other regions, ang problema eh, pinag-uusapan pa lamang 'yan, eh marami ng nahahati. Hindi pa naintindihan mabuti, ay nagde-desisyon na para to divest Church kahit walang masyadong malalim na, nakadahilanan. That is sad, because as body of Christ, kung katawan natin, let's keep it intact. Huwag nating bayang magkahati-hati at magkahiwalay, alright. So, 'yan po 'yung regionalization, in my understanding, ah, to the document. Pangalawa, ano ang kahalaga ng Worldwide Regionalization? Una, magkakaroon tayo ng autonomiya sa bawat konferencia ng bawat region. Ako po, ever since, ay advocate ng autonomy. At hindi ko iniiwan 'yung spirit ng autonomy. In, twenty ba 'yun, 'yung, na nag-resurrect 'yung, 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 pag, ah, pag adhikayin natin na magkaroon ng affiliated autonomy, no? Bakbaka nun eh, ah, si Bishop Nakpill, lagi kami napapagalitan nun eh dahil ang, ang advo kasi ng, ng Church nun eh, globalization eh. But we contest, we try to, to, to propose to study both regionalization and autonomy. Yan, globalization and autonomy. We won, but not enough to push through. Alam niyo na dahil ano? Habang ako'y tumatanda, aminin natin at hindi, no? Kaya 'yung iba mga kasabay ko diyan, nasisilaw ako ngayon eh. Dahil kasabay ko na rin sa pagkakainuhan eh. The more na appreciate ko 'yung structure ng Church natin as connectional. Mamaya discuss kayo. 'Yung, sa discipline, merong full autonomy, merong affiliated autonomy, at tayo, advo kay tayo ng affiliated autonomy. But when I study it carefully, in affiliated autonomy, 'yung connection natin ay, meron tayong connection, but there are only two, tama ba 'yun? Two, two delegates, one lay and one clergy. Whereas in this, in this worldwide regionalization, kung ano ang delegates natin ngayon, yun pa din. Hindi dalawa lang. Kaya 'yung equity ay makikita natin dyan later on. So I feel eh this is much better than affiliated autonomy. So I go for it. We will enjoy being autonomous and yet connected to the whole body of Christ, the church. Iyon, ito'y isa sa value na pinapahalaga niyan, 'yung pagkakapantay-pantay ng mga region. At 'yung centro na dati ay Amerika, hindi na po ngayon. Even the United States, the United Methodist Church in the US, naintindihan nila yon that this time it is no longer US as the center of Methodistism. At ang maganda rito, 'yung equity, 'yung connection natin, connection to the whole body of Christ. One region to other regions, not only to the US. So 'yung, 'yung essence, 'yung, 'yung spirit of connectionalism, 'yung equity at decentralization, pumapasok po dito sa usapin ng worldwide regionalization. May, eto pa, may kapangyarihang magdesisyon at gumawa ng alituntunin para sa kanilang sarili. Ang bawat region at igagalang ng ibang region. Meron po tay, binibiantayon ang authority to decide for ourselves without being pressured by other regions. There is respect in all regions. Di ba maganda yon? We can decide on ourselves. We can make rules and policy in accordance to our context in relation to the law of the land and maximizing our culture as a church. Halimbawa, 'yung usapin ng kasal, kahit na sa, ah, social principles na marriage it between, ah, two, ah, two consenting adult, but still we can maintain our, our belief that marriage it is between a woman and a man. A man and women, ay mali yon. Between man and woman, we can put that because that is the law of the land, we follow the law of the land. So we are given that authority mga minamahal. And even 'yung rituals natin, alam niyo napakayaman nung ating ano yon, nung kultura natin. Hindi lang natin masyadong nabibigyan ng pansin. Yung mga graduate ng UTS, sino ba mga graduate ng UTIS dito? UTIS. Alam niyo, noong nasa seminaryo tayo, gaganda ng mga liturgy natin eh. Yung culture natin, we, we try to develop, we try to develop liturgy. Ang problema lang ko minsan mga pastor pagdating sa local church eh copy paste na lang ng liturgy. Hindi na masyadong tinagiyayaman 'yung culture, ano? But that's very important when we develop our liturgy and rituals. And we are given that authority also. Yung ordination, 'yung iba, nagkakagalin dyan dahil inalis daw sa book of discipline 'yung, ah, ordination, ah, practicing, di ano ba yon? Self-about practicing homosexuals, inalis na daw yon. But we are not forbidden to develop our, our, ah, rules on ordination. Kung gusto natin na yun ay manatili, so be it. We can do that, we can develop that in our discipline, mga kapatid. Ano pa? Mabibigyan ng pagkakataon ng bawat region na mag-mission ayaw sa konteksto at kultura ng bawat region, contextual mission. Yung ating mga pagmimisyon, hindi na tayo didiktahan ng ibang lahi. Among ourselves, we can do our mission meaningfully. Kahit 'yung mga Amerikano, even 'yung mga ubispo sa Council of Bishops, ina-admit nila that mission outside of the US is an export of the UMC. Exported mission. Eh, parang naniniwala ako dun sapagat. Pagbabalikan ko 'yung, 'yung mission natin eh, paano ba nagsimula ang ating UMC? Di ba galing sa US? Padala ng missionary dito, tinanggap natin sila, naniwala tayo sa kanila. Sa totoo, hindi 'yung sinasabi nila, tinanggap natin. Sabi nga nung mga Afrika na, na kasama namin eh. You came to our land as missionaries. You, you taught us to read the Bible. We believe on you, we read the Bible. You taught us to pray. So we pray, we close our eyes and we pray. But when we open our eyes, we have the Bible. You have our land. So, for so long a time, we embrace the theology of mission that US send missionaries to us, but this time it is the other way around. Di ba? Tayo na ang nagpapadala ng missionaries. At iba pa 'yung style ng ating mission, the way we do our mission as Filipinos, how? Eto, si Brother June. Nagpunta kami sa Dubai noon, nung batabatap ako nun ano? Eh sinama namin si Thomas Kemper, the, the General Secretary of the GBGM. He was so surprised, sabi niya, "How did you do it? How can you do mission in the Islamic country?" Sabi namin, "Very simple." "Yabangan ako, very simple." "How?" The Methodist faith, the Christian faith is in our DNA. Filipinos, wherever they go, they begin doing mission. We don't support them. They are tent makers, and I'm a witness of that. I've been in Mindanao. I served the Bao Episcopal area and I learned that the United Methodist Church in Mindanao came from northwest Philippines annual conference. Pinapalakpakan yon. Di ba? Kaya pag pumunta ka sa Mindanao, talungin mo, "Sampu ba dito 'yung United Methodist Church?" Hindi naman nila alam. Baka ho 'yung Ilocano Church. Ayon, di ba? Ay, yun nga pala. Yung Methodist Church dun eh, Ilocano ang pagkakilala nila. Yung dala nila dun yon, Sanaga, di ba? Sanaga. O, tuwang-tuwang ako dun Sanaga, sapagat nagsalita ako dun, tinakinggan ko 'yung history. Merong mag-asawa, nanapad pa doon, fisherman, dumating 'yung Sunday. Naghanap sila ng church, of course, walang church. Ang ginawa nung mag-asawa, nag-pray, nag-Bible study. Kina, sumunod na linggo, humanap sila ng kapitbahay. Sinama nila sa prayer, sinama nila sa Bible study. And eventually, dumami sila at naging church. Alam niyo kung sino 'yung mag-asawa na yon? Mister and Missy, Simplesio Santos. Members from Taal, United Methodist Church. Sila 'yung ginamit ng Panginoon. That's how we do our mission. Wherever we go, dala natin 'yung ating pananampalataya. Sa Amerika, pag nag, pag may budget, may mission. Kung walang budget, walang mission. Sa Filipino, may pera o wala, may mission. Amen, don. I have an experience to the Standing Committee. I don't, ah, I know it's not known to them, but it's in my heart. One time de, we were discussing, I think it was in Manila, when we saw the need of having a legal, legal mind in the Standing Committee because we were then discussing legal issues. So I, I made a proposal, I thought, I, I, I told the group, if we need to have a legal consultant in the Standing Committee, why don't we, why don't we get? And one of the bishops in our committee asked me, "Bishop, do we have a budget for that?" Of course, it's not in our budget. If that's not in our budget, then we cannot do that. My mind worked, passed track. I thought to myself, "Why in the Philippines? Even though we don't have money, if we feel that we need that, we can produce money." That is our context, that our setting. The more we can, we can do mission if we continue to cultivate our culture. Nakunawalan, na-rapture yata 'yung aking ano, screen. Hindi pa ko tapos, huy. Ayon, ayon. So 'yung, 'yung contextual, ah, framework ng mission, napakayaman natin dun. And we will continue to explore that. Ano pa? Then, yan, ito napaka, that's very, ah, promising. Because adapting worldwide regionalization, each region is given authority to make our rules the regional book of discipline. According to our laws, according to our context, according to our needs. Di ba gusto natin yon? Parang ayaw niyo? You know, there was a time when, in our covenant group, one of the bishops approached me and asked me to support their advocacy. Hindi ko na sabihin ko na advocacy. Sabi niya sa akin, "If you will support us here, it will not affect you." But I said to her, "How will it not affect us? We are using the same book of discipline." The problem with us, we adopted the book of discipline in toto. Although hindi natin maintindihan, we adopted it. But having worldwide regionalization, we can make our discipline, the regional book of discipline, gagawa po tayo at higit na maintindihan natin ito. Nung isang araw nag-uusap kami nila Bishop. Ano may pinag-uusapan natin Bishop about appointment, di ba? Appointment ng district superintendent. Para hindi natin demanda 'yung mga ubispo, di ba 'yung mga ganon? Eh, sag, suggest na 'yung Bishop, Bishop, ah, Rodell, sabi niya, "Why don't we put that in the book of discipline, the detailed part of it?" Pwede naman, di ba? Pwede naman nating ilagay yon. So that's a privilege on our part. What else? Yan, nabanggit ko na kanina yan. Wala na yata eh. Eto, this is exciting. The General Conference in the future, when this ah, worldwide regionalization become a reality. We believe that the General Conference will, will have a great change. At present, at present, when we talk of General Conference, all issues of the United States, of the United Methodist Church in the US are being discussed in the General Conference because they have no central structure like the Central Conference. Kaya 'yung itong nakaraan, dalawang araw, inip na inip tayo, pinag-uusapan lamang kung anik-anik lang, na wala naman pakialam sa atin. Di ba? Para sa kanila yon, wala tayong kinalaman doon dahil wala nga silang structure katulad ng Central Conference. But when this worldwide regionalization shall be realized, US can discuss their issues among themselves and regions outside of the US will address issues among themselves. Therefore, the General Conference will no longer be ten days full of legislation, but I think more on celebration, di ba di? The General Conference will become more celebrative, sharing what happened to one region to the whole church. That's the lacking in the General Conference. The General Conference is purely legislative. Sometimes we don't know what's happening on the other side of the planet. Hindi nila alam 'yung ginagawa natin. But with these changes, I think there will be a great, ah, future full of anticipation and celebration. Ang mga usapin sa komprensa general ay matutoon sa usaping pangconnectional, general issues at hindi usaping estados odidos katulad ng Central Conference. Banggit niya na yon. Eto, 'yung sa discipline po, ito'y magiging bahagi ng, ng General Book of Discipline. Saligang batas, hindi po pwedeng baguhin yan unless na ratification. General Book of Discipline, mananatili po yan. Doctrine, bahagi ng buong iglesia yan, kahit sa region. Ministry ng lahat ng Kristiyano, kasama po, and then social principles. Yan po ay common sa lahat yan, sa lahat ng region. Eto, let's proceed to the last part. Ano ang challenge sa atin? Kung naintindihan natin, 'yung worldwide regionalization at ano 'yung bintahin nun sa atin, ano ngayon? So what? Yung appeal po sa atin, let's approve the ratification of the Constitution. This coming annual conferences, bishops will present to you this, ah, ratification. I hope and I pray that you will support this, ah, deratification. And we need two-thirds aggregate votes of all delegates all over the globe. Not only two-thirds vote from the Philippine Central Conference, but the whole world. That's an appeal that is before you. And I hope and I pray we will all be one in ratifying and amending the Constitution of the United Methodist Church. Maraming salamat po at ah, yun lang ang kaya kong sabihin sa usaping ito.
Salamat po Bishop Sery Francisco. So, bago po ang response na ibibigay sa atin ni Dr. Levi Bautista, aawit po muli 'yung male choir, Genesis, Male Voices.
If you could see what I once was, if you could go with me back to where I started from, then I know you would see all rock of love that took me in its sweet embrace and made me what I am today. He's an old sinner. Saved by grace. I'm just a sinner saved by grace. When I stood condemned to death, he took my place. Now I live and breathe in freedom. With each breath of life, I take love and forgiven. Back with the living. I'm just a sinner saved by grace. How could I boast of anything I've ever seen or done? How could I dare to claim as mine the victories God has won? Where would I be had God not brought me enchanted to this place? I'm here to say I'm nothing but a sinner saved by grace. I'm just a sinner saved by grace. When I stood condemned to death, he took my place. Now I grow and breathe in freedom. With each breath of life, I take love and forgiven. Back with the living. I'm just a sinner saved by grace. Now I grow and breathe in freedom. With each breath of life, I take love and forgiven. Back with the living. I'm just a sinner saved by grace.
Marami salamat muli sa ating mga taga-SNEPAK na mga kabataan, mga yang professionals po sila. Meron daw silang concert ngayon December. Suportahan po natin, at sila po ay nagre-race ng funds para sa kanilang distrito. Ngayong hapon po, meron po tayong magrerespond sa ating Worldwide Regionalization. Ang atimpung respondent ay isang Tagan-Northern Philippines Annual Conference NPAC. Si Reverend Dr. Liberato Bautista. Siya po ang Assistant General Secretary for United Nations and International Affairs ng General Board of Church and Society, at presidente din ng Congo, hindi po ng bansang Congo, kundi ng Conference of Non-Governmental Organizations in Consultative Relationship with United Nations. Palakpapu natin si Dr. Levi Bautista.
Mahirap sundan 'yung magandang awit, so try ko na kayo ay magising. Isang technique ng mga speakers, kung sila ay nagpatawahin, di dahil matatawa kayo, kundi para magising 'yung speaker mismo. 'Yun ang isang technique ko, at 'yung panahon ngayon ay medyo nakakaantok. So, uumpisahan ko sa isang kwento, pero bago 'yun, papasalamat ako kay Pastor Marisol at saka 'yung Program Committee for giving me time to respond. Nasa Los Angeles ako, a little over a week ago, nung sinabi ni Pastor Marisol na pwede bang mag-respond ka? Pero nandun ako sa Los Angeles para binyagan 'yung tatlo kong mga grandchildren. Eh, magagalit ang asawa ko at mga parents nila kung isisingit ko dun 'yung mag-draft ng aking presentation. Kaya sabi ko sarili ko, susulatin ko 'yung presentation ko mula sa 27 hours na flight ko mula sa New York hanggang dito. Nanood ako ng sine, I have to be very upfront. Nanood ako ng sine, zero plano, wala ring nagawa na lecture. But I must give justice to the topic, and very important. Gusto kong umpisahan sa isang kwento. Natutunan ko itong kwento na ito sa dating General Secretary ng National Council of Churches, Dr. Feliciano Carignio. And it has to do with the difference between philosophical theology and contextual theology. I don't know if you've heard of this. Ituyong contest sa pagitan ng nagsisimulang seminarista ng Ateneo, ibig sabihin Jesuita, at ng nagpapasimulang seminarista ng Methodist na nag-aral sa UTS. Ang contest, the contest goes this way. What is the ministry to you? Without using any words, but only action. So, 'yung contest, so 'yung araw ng contest, nandun 'yung Jesuit novice, nandun 'yung Methodist seminarian, 'yung dalawang seminaries, nagdala sila ng cheering squad nila. At 'yung contest ay three rounds. The contest was going to be in three rounds. So, 'yung pasimulan na natin 'yung contest. 'Yung Jesuit, binuksan nga 'yung backpack. So, complete silence, ha? Walang reaksyon. Kasi 'yun 'yung contest, no words demonstrate your response through action. 'Yung Jesuit, binuksan nga 'yung backpack niya, naglabas siya ng apple, binakita niya sa audience. After naipakita niya palakpak 'yung Jesuit seminari- na cheering squad. 'Yung Methodist na nag-respond, binuksan nga 'yung brown bag, nakukulubot na bag, binuksan nga, naglabas siya ng pandesal. 'Yun ang pansagot niya doon sa apple. First round finished. Second round coming. Sabi nung Jesuita, sagot ng Methodist. 'Yung isa, isa. So, one finger 'yung Methodist, three fingers. Second round finished, they're starting to get tense. So, third round, just the Jesuit with an open palm, sagot ng Methodist with a closed fist. Three rounds finished. The judges were ready to adjudicate. They went to tally the scores. Meantime, the seminarians were very tense and unrestrained. They went straight to the restroom. It's inappropriate to tell you what happened there because I would rather announce who won. Who do you think won? Oh, come on, don't be shy, it's the Methodist who won. Come on, it's the Methodist who won. And so, nanalo 'yung Methodist. That night, the Methodist seminarian went to Father Bernas, who is director of the Jesuit Seminary at Ateneo, at sabi nung Jesuit Seminary, "Father Bernas, I'm resigning, I'm leaving the seminary because I have disappointed the scholast- I have not met the exactions of the scholastic tradition of the Jesuit." Sabi niya, "Teka-teka, anak, ano nangyari?" "Eh, biroin mo naman," sabi niya. Bilang good Jesuit, the search for the knowledge about God, which the apple represented, knowledge. Eh, kaso 'yung Methodist akong kalaban, sabi niya, "Anong knowledge kundi saan?" Bread of life. Sabi nung Father Bernas, "Ay, talagang talo ka anak, ikaw eh, pa-apple-apple ka siya, bread of life. Talo ka sa first round." But what happened in the second round? Well, like the Jesuit, like good Jesuits, it's about the teaching of God's Word. But my Methodist counterpart said, "What are you going to teach except about the Trinity? God the Father, God the Son, and God the Holy Spirit." "You already lost the second round, so you are going to lose the entire contest." But tell me what's the third round? The third round, he said, "Like a good Jesuit, the preaching of the Word." And then my good Methodist friend insisted not only on the Trinity, but the unity of the Godhead. The unity of the three into one. Now, that same night, hindi ko nasasabihin sa inyo kung sino 'yung, pero ano taba ata 'to nung panahon ni Dr. Jose. Pumunta 'yung Methodist, the Methodist seminarian went to Dr. Jose, the president, may he rest in peace. He went to the Methodist seminary president, and he said, "Dr. Jose, we won." Sabi niya, "How did that happen?" But tell you what, last dog deje Jesuita. Ke-inted nga, inted nga, mga snack diyan ng nagkaputan, nagmayayaman sila ng mga seminaristang katoliko. Binigyan siya ng apple, ang ibinigay ng nanay ko ay pandesal lang. Nilaslastugan, ang yabang-yabang niya. Now, for those of you who are outside, apple in the Philippines is generally imported fruit. So, this rich son of, this rich brat had an apple, and all my poor mother could give me for snack is a pandesal, is a salted bread. It was the second round. Aba, hindi lang sa ininsulto niya ako sa kanyang snack, sabi niya, "Sige, I will poke your nose." Dinuduro pa niya ako. Eh, di anong sagot mo, anak? "Sige, droim, ipoke mo 'yung nose mo, pati 'yung dalawang mata mo itutu- isasama ko." Abay, gusto pa niya kong sampalin. Sabi niya, "Sample mo ako, susuntukin kita." These are valid representation, these are valid responses to the same question. One is philosophical, the other is contextual. I hope you get the drift dun sa contextualization. One does not cancel the other, both at good representations of what I wanted to convey. Kaya lang, baka biglang sabihin niyo, 'yung palang presentation ni Levi ay puro lang kwento. Bigyan natin ng konting laman. The presentation by Bishop Sery is sufficient to explain the width and expanse of the General Conference decision on worldwide regionalization. Mine will be simply annotations to some of what he said and coming from a personal perspective. Gusto kong iapproach 'yung presentation ko by deploying the Wesleyan quadrilateral of scripture, tradition, experience, and reason. And I hope 'yung pinakahuli kong presentation sa inyo sa Central Church na PowerPoint, had I the time to prepare, I would have wanted to do that, pero wala tayo ng oras. But I hope in the presentation, you will notice 'yung the way I deploy in various stages 'yung scripture, tradition, experience- 'yung scripture, tradition, experience, and reason. I will use the scriptures to argue the importance of both texts and contexts. We're talking always of contextual. Ang argumento ninyo in terms of same-sex marriage, many of you draw from the text, from the scripture. So let's look at not just the context, but the text. So I will use the scriptures to argue the importance of looking both texts and contexts. And for those of you who have heard previous lectures from me, there's a third element, pretext. Pretext, ano 'yung mga tunay na sagot at rason na hindi natin nasasabi sa lektura na ganito, pero idamdayamudum yo kadagita karubayo, gaputa dayyeti at dati unag, teka-unag-unagan niyo, ngamahan niyo maibaga. That's the pretext. And sometimes, we give words to the text and the context, but we vote our pretext. And it deprives the convinced body of the knowledge, kasi itinatago niyo 'yung, sa katotohanang sinasabi ninyo ay 'yung text and context, pero iboboto ninyo 'yung pretext niyo. Kaya 'yung mga survey and poll hindi magkato, ay bakit nanalo ito? Eh noong nagkukwentahan tayo, kung mananalo ba to, matatalo eh hindi yon. It's because you voted your pretext rather than, rather than publicly available understandings of the text and the context. I will also, I will refer to experience in relation to my experiences as a direct witness to the yoke put upon me by my claim as a saved sinner. "I come to you as a sinner and saved by True Christ dying for me on the cross." That's strong in the evangelism that Pastor Rufino Gaspar brought to us. We, my family is Catholic, there's only four, now, it should not be, I hope you're not too much of, this is not too much of shock for my good friends, I'm the eighteenth of eighteen. Ako ang bunso at pang labingwalo ako. Kamiing natirang apat lamang ang naging Methodist. And I want to affirm with you, just like what the Book of Discipline says in the doctrinal and theological emphasis section, it's very clear. The Wesleyan source of, the Wesleyan understanding is discipleship is the same source for our social witness. There is no separate source in the understanding of Wesley for how we do discipleship and how we do public and social witness. It's the same source, so one cannot negate the other. And that's part of the richness of the Wesleyan quadrilateral. I will invoke why tradition keeps us with both a contextual and a connectional narrative na siyang nagbibikis that unites and binds us as people called United Methodist. My presentation is a form of reasoning with you. I'm not, the bishop was presenting an official process, I'm not presenting an official process. I'm presenting to you with an editorial bent, ayon sa karanasan ko bilang dalawampotwalong taon na representante ng buong iglesia sa buong mundo sa United Nations sa New York. Yun ang, 'yung ministro sa United Nations sa New York ay ministro ng iglesyang kalakhan. At 28 years na ako na bilang representante doon. At nakita ko, the United Nations is made of 193 nations. Those nations come with disparate understandings of economy, politics, and culture. They come with different ideological bent, but they stick together. Magkakaiba ang pagkaintindi nila kung paano tratuhin ang West Philippine Sea, kung paano tratuhin ang climate change, paano tratuhin ang human rights, paano tratuhin ang mga karapatan na mga kababaihan, paano tratuhin ang pagwasak at pagwala ng mga polio, HIV/AIDS. Pero naniniwala sila na kapag sila ay humiwalay sa pagkasamahan na yan ng 193 nations, mahihirap ang sugpuin ang mga global issues na yan without the unity needed. That's what worldwide regionalization is about. This is about more than 8 million Methodist, perhaps of disparate understandings of the text, precisely because of their context. But they appropriate their understanding in the hope that they are able to contribute not only to the unity of the church by way of speaking as a corporate body, i.e. General Conference, at NAWA, this is a language as a result of the worldwide regionalization. NAWA, dahil sa worldwide regionalization legislation, hindi na ang America ang punto de vista ng ating pagmimisyon, kundi bawat lokalidad na kung saan may Methodist mo ay punto de vista na primeria. Ibig sabihin, prior to worldwide regionalization, or so I think, and so I hope, the reference of our organizational structure is American, the reference of our public witness is American. What is the United States doing? How is it helping the Philippines with military aid? How is it contradicting Chinese hegemony in the Asia-Pacific region? Ang reference ng ating public witness ay kung ano ang ginagawa ng America. And I'll use, I'll come back to this with respect to autonomy. Sabi ko kay Pastor Marisol, don't introduce me profusely, I was going to reintroduce myself to you. For those of you who don't know, I was the former national president of the MYF. I married the next president of the MYF. So my wife and I are both national presidents of the MYF. I was for 10 years the Human Rights Coordinator of the National Council of Churches during the martial law period of Marcos. So you can imagine how difficult that was to be the Human Rights Coordinator in a time of difficulty. And then, I went to the United States to do my studies. I did, I have to be upfront, I did not finish my PhD because I was hired by Church and Society, and that's 28 years ago. I was the youngest Assistant General Secretary, I have been Assistant General Secretary since, and I'm glad that, my claim to D is that D Stickly Minor was one of our board members in the 1990s. Oh no, no, early 2000s, 2000s. Nancy Kaluya was a board member, Attorney Ray Cortez was also a board member. I was one of the major drafters of the World Methodist Social Affirmation. So I have come up close to realizing that the Methodist family is beyond the United Methodist Church. We belong to a far larger Wesleyan family. So when we speak of our understanding of Wesley, ay lumili his natao sa pagkaintindi ng Wesley, baka pagkaintindi lamang natin ito bilang United Methodist. May pagkaintindin Wesley beyond the United Methodism, because the World Methodist Council is composed of so many. Thank you to Bishop Akdal, I was one of the official delegates of the World Methodist Conference just recently held in Sweden. At nakita ko doon at nasumpungan ko, how we must humble ourselves when we say we have a franchise to the Wesleyan understanding, na meron tayong natatangin pagkaintindi kay Wesley. Samantalang may mga iba pang Wesleyan churches na mayroon ding pagkaintindi. So the worldwide regionalization as a contextual platform invites us to humble ourselves that the structure and the trajectory of our mission is not our franchise, hindi natin monopoly ito. We join in the universal priesthood of all believers. When we join in the ministry of the church, when we join in the mission of the church, when we ratify a worldwide regionalization, we're making available a new platform around which your witness in Tabuk, Kalinga, your witness in Tagum, Dabau, sa ambang Tagum? Di ko nasigurad, anong probinsya Bishop? Dabau del Norte. The witness of Christians in Monrovia, Liberia, the witness of Christians in Kinshazad, Congo. The witness of Christians everywhere are as authentic as anybody else's. That's experience in the quadrilateral, but experience must be interrogated by scripture, tradition, and reason. So 'yung patotoo, which is what I'm doing today, you cannot discount my experience. But you can interrogate my experience whether it is an corporate experience. Book of Discipline is textualization of the corporate experience. Kaya 'yung doctrinal Wesleyan theological emphasis within the Book of Discipline is the corporate expression of our understandings. All else, like Levy's presentation to you, all else like my presentation are just personal experiences. And therefore, I bend towards the corporate experience when I speak of Methodism. And that's, that's clear in the Book of Discipline. No one, not Levy, not you, speaks for the church except the General Conference. So when the General Conference has spoken, that's the corporate text. That's the corporate text that invites us to contextualize in our ministries. Now, nung 1981, and I think 81, I was, I was 19 years old, I think. The Council of Bishops elected me as one of the 21 voting delegates to the World Council of Churches Assembly in Vancouver. The next thing I know, sinulatan ako ng General Commission on Christian Unity and Interreligious Concerns, ang sabi, "Dear Levy Bautista, the Council of Bishops has elected you as one of the delegates to the World Council of Churches in Vancouver, Canada. However, to fly you out, and I want you to know that there will be a briefing of all Methodist delegates in New York. And from New York, the delegates will join the North American delegation in Montreal, Canada. But then the next paragraph of the letter of the General Secretary of GCCYC, which is now Office of Interreligion, "However, flying you from the Philippines is very expensive. Let alone to also bring you to Canada where the North American delegation will meet. May I therefore suggest that you come to Vancouver two days ahead and I'll sit down with you to orient you." I went to Bishop Granados, and may he rest in peace. This is what you say as parity in the United Methodist Church? "I am a voting delegate on behalf of the entire church. Your Council of Bishops elected me as one of the delegates, together with, I was with Bishop Marjorie Matthews, I was with John Love, who eventually became General Secretary." So Bishop Granados was fuming mad, wala pang texting, wala pang cellphone, so nagtelegrama. In a telegraphic language, sabi niya, "Levy Bautista was elected delegate on behalf of the General Church. Levy Bautista is coming to New York, he will go to, he will also go to Montreal, period." No explanation. But that's an exact, but that was more than what, 40, from 51 years ago. We have come a long way, but we need to check vestiges of that even ngayon, dahil meron pang mga example. Now, let me end. Mano pa ng minuto ako, moderador? I have exceeded my time, I know. Let me address the issue of autonomy. As you very well know, ang mga MYF at mga Jaconesa ang promoter ng autonomy. And my wife and I, as national presidents of the MYF, we were, we were strong supporters of autonomy. And I want to tell you, just like what Bishop Serry said, I have not changed my mind on autonomy, but, mali, and I, now, I speak strongly on this. Autonomy is the function of self-determination with respect to the entanglement of US colonialism in the structure of the General Church. And I'll give you, I'll explain that later. So ang autonomy ay function ng social, political, economic, and cultural relation with America. To the degree that United Methodist Church is an institution up to this point largely of the United, of United States, then may salient 'yung usapan ng autonomy within the structure. Ang worldwide regionalization paves the way for the untangling, paves the way for the changing of the colonial relation of the US church with the Philippines. So ibig sabihin, mga kapatid, and I, again, I warn you, this is my personal position as good as any of you. For those of you who are advocating for autonomy now, I think you're addressing the internal structure of the church, and it is different from the real autonomy from US colonial entanglement, which is the autonomy I've always held since then and up till now. I'll end with a story, just how I started with a story. This is a story about the Board of World Mission, ah, Board of Mission of the Methodist Episcopal Church, which is now GBGM. So in 1898, the Board of Mission of the Methodist Church visited the White House. The President of the United States was President William McKinley, a Methodist. So the Board of Global Ministries in that time went to the White House to visit the Methodist President, William McKinley. Hindi ito itunoro sa history book natin, at hindi rin itinuturo sa history book sa America. This is what President McKinley said in the meeting. Papaalis na 'yung Methodist delegation, sabi niya, "Sandali, sandali, may nakalimutan kayo, balik kayo. Nakalimutan ko sabihin sa inyo 'yung panaginip ko kagabi." And this, this story is now part of the Methodist Archives at Drew University, where the General Commission on Archives and History is, and may official record ito. So sabi ni, ganito sabi ni McKinley, "Hold a moment longer, wag mo na kayong umalis." "Not quite yet, gentlemen," and it's correct. The Methodist delegation were all white men, no women, no colored, only white men. "Not quite yet, gentlemen, before you go, I would like to say just a word about the Philippine business. I have been criticized a good deal about the Philippines, but you know I don't deserve it," McKinley said. "The truth is, I didn't want the Philippines, but when they came to us as a gift from God." So the Philippines is a gift of God to the United States according to actually gods. Here's a Methodist president using the word god in the plural sense. "It's a gift from the gods. I did not know what to do with the Philippines. When the Spanish war broke out, Dewey, General Dewey was at Hong Kong. And I ordered General Dewey to go to Manila and to capture and destroy the Spanish fleet. And he had to, because, listen to the reasoning. If America is defeated, we have no place to repair our naval ships in the globe. And if the DONS, D-O-N-S, referring to the Spanish Dons and Donias, were victorious, they would likely cross the Pacific and ravage Oregon and California as well. And so, General Dewey had to destroy the Spanish fleet, and he did it. But that was as far as I thought my dream would go. So sa kanya medyo bangungot pa yon, pero nagpatuloy 'yung kanyang dream. When I next realized that the Philippines had dropped into our laps, notice the use of the language, bumagsak sa ating mga, ay, tsaka mo 'yan tagalog na, natinagka, itilupok. Inted, in regalo ti Diyos, ti Pilipinas, ti America, kasla natinag nga, kusang natinag, itilupok na. "Dropped into our laps." I confess what I did not know what to do with them. I sought counsel from all sides, Democrats as well as Republicans, but I got little help from them. I thought first, we will only capture Manila, then Luzon, then other islands perhaps also. I walked the floor of the White House, hanga makaturugan, ag subis, ag pagna pagna, diba? Night after night until midnight, and I am not ashamed to tell you, Methodist gentlemen, that I went down on my knees and prayed to Almighty God for light and guidance more than one night. And one night late, it came to me this way. I don't know what it was, but here it is. That United States could not give back the Philippines to Spain. That would be cowardly and dishonorable. Number two, that we could not turn the Philippines over to France and Germany because they are our commercial rivals. The Philippines is good commerce for the United States. Number three, that we could not leave the Philippines to themselves, oh, we could not leave the Filipinos to themselves. They, the Filipinos, are unfit for self-government. And if we leave them, they will soon have anarchy and misrule over there worse than Spain's was. And number four, that there was nothing left for us Americans to do but to take all Filipinos, educate them all, uplift and civilize the Filipinos, and Christianize them, and by God's grace, do the very best we can by them as our fellow men for whom Christ also died. And then I went to bed and went to sleep and slept soundly. And the next morning, I sent the chief engineer of the War Department, which is our map maker, and I told him to put the Philippines on the map of the United States. And he was pointing to a large map in the meeting with the Methodist. "And there they are, and there they will stay while I am president." Two months later, the ship that sailed in which the Methodist soldier that preached in Manila, that was the beginning of United Methodism. So McKinley, in this dream, revealed to Methodist, said, "I will send the battleship to Manila." And on that battleship is a Methodist soldier, layperson who started Methodism. The complicity of the commercial and the military and the naval pursuit of the colonial pursuit of America, the United Methodist Church is complicit. I know, I've heard from some of you that in the next General Conference, we must also ask for an apology from the United States for the colonization. And that we must undo the narrative that the Philippines was simply dropped on the laps and it was a gift from the gods. That is worldwide regionalization. It should find greater resonance and acceptance in the General Conference floor to tell our narrative because that's the context of our mission. I hope I helped a little bit the thinking. Thank you very much.
Maraming salamat po, una, kay Bishop Serry Francisco and Reverend Dr. Levy Bautista for your presentations, articulations, and even personal experiences po. Kung paano ho talaga natin ma-uphold ang worldwide regionalization. Baguho tayo dumako sa open forum, given our time constraint po, medyo lampas na sa oras, no? We will only entertain three questions po, no? So before that, we will have some messages of solidarity. First, from the Executive Director of the Mission Engagement Unit of the Global Ministries of the United Methodist Church and present member of the Standing Committee on Central Conference Matters, let us welcome Mabuhay Reverend D. Stickly Minor.
Thank you. It is an honor to be with you all. And I am going to be addressing you as a member of the Standing Committee on Central Conference Matters, and really, more importantly, as an individual. I am an ordained deacon in the United Methodist Church. And I just want to let you know that for a long time, I have seen the United Methodist Church in the Philippines to be an example to me of what it means to see the people in your communities and to advocate for the justice that God desires for God's people. I have seen the courage of the Church in the Philippines to stand up to the extrajudicial killings, to engage around climate justice. And so, one of the reasons why, as an individual, I am very supportive of regionalization is because I believe that my own faith and my own leadership and witness is dependent on seeing and learning what people around the world are doing. You all have made me a better Christ follower. You all have made me learn what it means to be a courageous witness to the love of Jesus Christ. And as Dr. Levy, well, Reverend Levy, but you know, we can call him a doctor, we're sharing, I believe that for the Church in the United States, it is absolutely necessary for us to remain in connection and in relationship and communion with the Church in the Philippines and Africa because I believe that our redemption of our history is directly tied to being in relationship with the places where we have colonized. And it is my hope that as we move forward, that we will be able to hear the stories and see and value the gifts and faith of the cultures from around the world so that the denomination truly becomes a worldwide identity where we see the faces and hear the stories of what's happening in the different places around the world. And for me, as a Methodist, United Methodist minister in the United States, I believe that my continued journey of redemption and healing through the love of Jesus Christ is deeply dependent on maintaining this connection with you all, with our brothers and sisters in Africa, in Europe, and around the world because together, we hold each other accountable to what it means to be the face of God in this world and to be able to live through the compassion and justice of Jesus Christ. And so, as an individual, I'm very supportive. And as a member of the Standing Committee, I just want you to know that the members of the Standing Committee just had a lot of open, honest conversation where we heard about the importance of people around the world wanting agency, being able to make decisions that aren't dependent on General Conference. And I desire, I truly desire to be a part of a Church that is not grounded and rooted in the United States. I really desire for us to indeed authentically be a worldwide Church that sees each other and values each other and is willing to walk together, challenge each other, and to celebrate the impact of our mission. So thank you.
Thank you, Reverend D. Next, we're grateful to also have with us the Reverend Richard Bentley, Chair of the Global Relations Team of the Love Your Neighbor Coalition, and a strong advocate for worldwide regionalization and a member of the Worldwide Regionalization Ratification and Strategic Group in Central Conferences. Mabuhay, Pastor Richard.
Magandang gabi sa inyong lahat. Our magandang gabi po sa inyong, ah, sapon, yes. Hapon, ah, sapon. Anyway, magandang hapon po sa inyong lahat. I am a local church pastor, now retired, living in the Los Angeles area. And one of the many titles I have is I've been working with the Global Relationships Team for more than ten years. And that is of the Love Your Neighbor Coalition, which is fifteen groups, mostly in the United States, that work around justice issues. The Five Racial Ethnic Caucuses, which includes connections with the National Association of Filipino United Methodists, is part of that. There's issues around fossil-free UMC, Israel-Palestine, Congress of the Deaf, creation justice, fifteen groups working together. But they also, over the years, have developed a strong sense that there needs to be a connection with leaders all around the world in the central conferences. And that's how they form the Global Relationships Team. Some of you here, I have a question. How many of you got visas thanks to the Global Relationships Team? I think there are five or ten, or ten more of you here. Can you raise your hands? A lot of your communications team, nobody's going to be brave and admit it. But we helped visas capen beyond what the United Methodist Church was doing on its own. And we have worked through many years what has led to what is now worldwide regionalization and connections of leaders. And now we're working with, trying to have not just the official structure of the Church, but the unofficial structure of the Church to do work in the Philippines and in different parts around Africa around regionalization and promoting regionalization. So greetings from Link and blessings for a rich and prosperous Central Conference gathering. And let us work together to create a Church where all of God's children are seen as fully part of the Church. It doesn't matter where in the world you live or what language you speak, but we know that we all belong here and we all fundamentally are equal or equity or however we want to use the language. And worldwide regionalization is one of the steps that will help us get there. So greetings, and I'm so happy to be here with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Reverend D and Reverend Richard, for your presence and solidarity. Okay po, so nakaredi po ang ating Bishop Serry and Pastor Levy for questions or clarifications. Okay po, meron po dun sa likod, we recognize you po. Wala pa po tayo sa official na business session, but you can state your name po and annual conference, and then your question po. Pwede pong pa-assist ng mic? Ala, okay po. Lapit na lang po kayo dito po, opo? Bababa na lang din po ako. Ay, eto pala. Dami palang mic. Opo, meron po.
Hello, meron po.
Oo, okay po.
Pastor Francis, meron po from recent Philippine Annual Conferences. Ang tanong ko po ay, sa panahong tayo ay nandoon na sa ating mini-meeting Worldwide Regionalization. Meron po kayang pagbabago sa paghalal natin sa mga ubis po?
Sino pong sasagot?
Kahit po sino po.
Okay po, okay. Sino pong?
Is possible po na meron ang changes on electing our bishop. Thank you.
Dahil tayo po ang gagawa ng rules sa atin, pwede nating pag-usapan yan. Eh, kahit naman ngayon, kahit hindi regionalized tayo eh, we can adopt procedures to elect bishop, not only our current tradition and practice. We can do that. That's what I believe.
Alright po. Sige po, salamat Bishop. Okay. Sorry po dahil tatlong question lang po. We, ano po, no, try to practice being inclusive. So tapos na po 'yung ating male. From the female, meron po nagtaas po dito. Sige, mananchi ta. Sorry po, three questions lang po eh.
Gusto kong, gusto ko pong sarunwan. Anong sarunwan sa Tagalog? Gusto ko pong sarunwan, 'yung, 'yung, oh, sundan. 'Yung question ng ating kapatid. Mayron din po bang pagbabago tungkol sa financial concern kung tayo ay Regional Conference na po?
Isa po sa value ng worldwide regionalization, a stewardship. So that, so that we can improve and maximize our resources so that eventually, no, 'yung concern natin to become self-governing, self-sustaining will be realized. Yeah, and time will come that we will not depend on foreign funds, foreign aids. That's our ultimate goal. Kasi when you look at the budget of the General Church, our share to the General Church is very minimal, napakaliit po. So I believe we will improve on our stewardship life.
Finance and administration are matters of, are temporal matters. Kaya dito sa Disiplina ng Pilipinas Committee on Temporal Economy, ang, ang pagbabago namang yayari dyan, ang, nagtataka ako na hindi ko naririnig sa inyo na kung ang usapan ay same-sex marriage, gusto niyo law of the land. Pero sa temporal economy, hindi niyo binabanggit, dapat lahat ng accountabilities, transparencies, and accounting ay hindi law of the land ang ginagamit niyo. Kaya ang sagot dyan sa pagbabago, i-implement ang lahat ng accounting rules that CPAs worldwide, these are laws of the land. So, 'yung, there is nothing, accounting for the discipling that we do, accounting, one, two, three, how many have been added to our number. It's the same rule for how much has been added to the cover of our Church and how were these expended, how were these spent, and how were these accounted for. 'Yung, ang, ang, ang gusto kong bigyan ng diin, and I think, ano na 'yung unang, ano na 'yung unang tanong, gusto kong sundan? Ah, 'yung, 'yung election of bishop, again, gusto kong dugtungan 'yung sinabi ni Bishop Serry that that belongs doon sa ating plan and organization and rules of order. Ibig sabihin non, ma'ar, ang interpretasyon ko doon, maaring magkaroon ng karapatan ang Central Conference para kanyang bigyan kung ano ang percentage ng pwedeng makapagboto ng ubis po. And we've done that.
And we've done that several times in the Central Conference. At some point, you lower the threshold of the two-thirds vote. But that also requires a two-thirds vote to overrule your rules. That's not new. That's not new to, that is not pertinent to the worldwide regionalization. Kahit nung wala pang worldwide regionalization, ay maari na nating gawin doon. So, I don't know what is the special importance of worldwide regionalization with respect to, kung ang ibig niyong sabihin ay maari ba nating dagdagan ng obispo? Can we add one, two, three, four more bishops? Now, that's not within the power of the, that's not, that's not within the contemplation of the worldwide regionalization. Dahil, the diplomat in me knows how to subvert the three-question rule. May nakalimutan ako Jen. 'Yung comment ko sa social principles. 'Yung sa social principles, naririnig na babasa ko sa inyong mga social media account na, oh, pinag, hindi na gagawin ito, pero 'yun namang social principles pala ay magiging parte ng, na hindi nating pwedeng palitan. The, the social, yeah, so I wanted to discuss that. The, the social principles is one of the General Conference documents that will be part of the General Book of Discipline and that regional conferences do not have the leeway, do not have the ability to change that. Now you have to remember that the social principles section on, let me bring you back to a quick historical note. Naging controversial 'yung social principles doon sa section ng homosexuality is incompatible with the teachings of Christ. It only became controversial when it was judicialized. When that section migrated to the punishable offense, to the punishable conduct of clergy. Now, what is the other social principle that use that language? War, guerra. War is incompatible with the teaching of Christ, but that never migrated to the punishable. Ang dapat ang dami sa atin, ang madadala sa korte ng ating iglesia dahil binabasbasan niyo ang mga guerra sa mundo, the use of weaponries. But that was not judicialized. That did not migrate to the section that is punishable. Only the homosexuality was migrated. So wag kayong mag-alala, 'yung social principles are instructive using the best persuasive language drawing from our specific theological and Wesleyan emphasis. I stick my reputation when I say this. Nung nine, 'yung nirerefer ninyo na 1972 language on marriage, nung 1972, wala pang Facebook, wala pang texting, wala, 'yung, 'yung nine, 'yung, the current social principles was vetted by more than 10,000 Methodist worldwide, exchanging texts, sending their comments of every word, phrase, and sentence and paragraph. It's the most democratically produced social principles and overwhelmingly voted by the General Conference. So, 'yung appealing ninyo to go back to an old version, those old versions do not have, do not have personality anymore in the United Methodist Church. The current Book of Discipline and the current social principles is the one that is at play. Quoting the old social principles as basis is simply not the way to argue other perspectives that you have. Thank you.
Okay po. Last, alright po. Si Sir po, opo. Um, ano po, si Sir po na nakab, opo.
Good afternoon po. Emil Busita po from PHEC Kabite. I would like to take this opportunity since we are sure with the campaign that we are doing, regionalization will be ratified. I'm praying for that. I have only one request if it is possible, since we are, we will drop our Book of Discipline based on our context. Is it possible to give mandate or to give provision that the bishops to be elected have the mandate to look after the situation of those small churches and the support of the pastors? Because I have been an officer for so many times, for a long time, but I can see churches with three members, five members, and pastors at, for their whole life receiving 6,000. And that is very pending on our part. And I have a very heavy heart. Dahil talagang since then, nakita ko na walang pagbabago at walang isang ang bishop na nakakita. Sa kalalagayan lang, which they can address it. So my point is, let us address that situation. That is one reason why this appellation happened. Because no church can disappelliate themselves if the pastor will not support them. And the reason there is, they are not content, they are, they're not happy at the present situation of the Methodist Church for 100 years or more, still, the situation is the same. Another issue here is how can we answer some queries that saying that regionalization and autonomy is the same, are the same. I, I said, no, it's not the same. They are not the same. Second, a third, I forgot the third one anyway. That's sinabi, because I forgot the third. Senior moment.
Tinuturo po ng lahat si Bishop Sery.
'Yung sinasabi ni Engineer ay comment in regard to the situation of local churches, salaries of pastors and deconises that the church should address. Iya namang po ay hindi natin kinakalam bigyan ng mandate ang bishop. That's part of the work of the bishop. Ah, hindi ko po aaminin na overlook. We are doing our best para mai-address po 'yan. You know that. Sa lahat ng mga annual conferences, we are planning, we are doing something to alleviate the situation of our church workers. Marami tayong mga ginawa at ginagawa para ma-improve natin ang kabuhayan ng ating mga manggagawa. Hindi lang siguro ganong kabilis, but then for sure there are many initiatives that we have done to address that situation.
Okay po. Sige ho. Again, maraming salamat po Bishop Sery and Reverend Dr. Levy. Si Pastor Levy po will be staying throughout the session. So pwede po tayong magtanong pa sa kanya kung meron pong mga, gusto po pong i-clarify or dagdag pa po ng mga paliwanag and even kay Bishop Sery po. Pero mas strategic po 'yung gagawin natin, no? So ito pong paparating na mga annual conference sessions po natin by next year would really be a, ano po, no, space for reciting together, prayerful discernment, kung saan po tayo dadalhin, no, ng worldwide regionalization sa ating pong faith, journey, and spiritual formation. And with that, may we request Bishop Sery for the final words. And then after that, we'll have our closing prayer na pangunan po ng ating Jakonesa mula po sa Northwest Mindanao Philippines Annual Conference, si Di Conis Feta ng Unan.
Mga kapatid, ang darating pong mga annual conference session mula January ay bahagi ng agenda ang ratification ng amendments of the Constitution as we discussed earlier. So ang akin pong appeal ay suportahan po natin ito. Ating iratify ang Constitution as to be presented to us by our bishops. At iyon ay magandang pagharap natin sa mga hamon, challenges ng ating iglesia. At sa pamagitan ito ay the more we will move forward to the mission and ministry of our Lord Jesus Christ entrusted unto us. So muli po, salamat sa inyo at nawawag patuloy natin ang pag-aaral dito. God bless po sa inyo lahat.
Tayo po ito mayo, umotindog ang tanan alang sa katapusan na pag-ampu. Mag-aampu kita in a Cebuano language. Oh Dios, na makagahom sa tanan o maloloyon. Salamat sa pandisal ngayong hahat.